Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board. It is 7:07. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of the Planning Board members, David Atkins, is participating remotely for this meeting, and his participation by telephone shall be captured in the meeting minutes. All votes taken during this meeting shall be by roll call vote. Dave, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, excellent.
And this is John Rogers, Chair of the Conservation Commission. We are also holding a hearing jointly with the Planning Board here this evening, and I think I'll leave it up to, for Brian to lead us into the discussion and go from there.
Great.
That's it.
Okay, welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. All meetings are video recorded by Westwood Media Center. If anyone else wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself so the audience is aware, seeing none. As a friendly reminder, please turn off your cellphone ringers. The meeting will be civil, and all people will be treated respectfully. In the event of a disruption, the Chair will give a warning the first time. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the Board. The Board will proceed to staff comments. The Board members will ask questions of the applicant. For public meeting, hearing items, the public will be given an opportunity to comment. Items that are not a public, items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the Board. When it is time for the public comment period, the Chair will call those wishing to speak to the podium to use the microphone. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions through the Chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. So, the first agenda item is 90 Brigham Way, Partners Urgent Care, Special Permit Continued Public Hearing. Could the applicant please come to the podium? Welcome.
Thank you. Jason North of Partners Urgent Care. So this is in reference to the notice for special permit for, to carry the four outlined chemicals in the application. This is actually a continuation from the last meeting. We have, and I've supplied for you, an updated spill response and containment plan. We updated July 10th. It outlines the three or four areas that we spoke about, and then also had the opportunity for you all to take a tour of the site. So the things I just want to point out for you is that in the storage containment, the individual bottle containers will be into, in the plastic bins, so stored on the shelves. So that's outlined and highlighted for you in the storage containment. The mop sink to have a drain plug, so that's been installed as well. And then biohazard disposal, transporting, you know, by a licensed hauler, just outlining that here. It's the same vendor, but just outlining it here for you. We did also look at the minor discharge and classifying as small discharge as anything a gallon or less. All of the chemicals, the medical chemicals that we have come in bottles less than a gallon, so that's not an issue for us either. So even if one were to spill, it'd be less than a gallon. And then, I think the final thing, I want to say is the parking. So, we designated parking space for deliveries at the same, and I've re-outlined where the parking spaces are, so that the plan that you'll see, I want to say it's page 12, outlines exactly where the parking is located, where the deliveries will happen. And I believe that addressed all the concerns that were brought up, either on-site or at the last hearing.
Sure. And Nora, do we have the image of the parking spaces designated?
I do have that. If you'll go down to the PowerPoint slides, it's the very first slide, where we've re-designated the parking space.
Is it in a different file or this file?
This file.
Okay.
There you go. So as you see before, that designation was in the drive path, and now we've taken the parking spaces. And so the pylon will be put there with a sign that says designated parking, and the parking spaces will be striped "Deliveries Only." And again, I believe that addresses all, so that's really all I have.
All right, anything else? That's it for now? Okay. Well, why don't we go one by one, from the Board members, if you have any additional questions or comments?
I had one question. On the drain covers?
Yes.
You had said when we had gone to the site meeting, visit, that they're pretty much leaving them down 24/7.
So they put them down in the morning and pick them up at night when they leave. So if it rains overnight, we don't have a problem. But there's no deliveries after hours.
And do you know the extent, the type of the brand? Because I know sometimes they-
Yes, I did send that over to Abby, and I do have a copy, if you'd like to have this. This is, it's called Drive Over Drain Blocker Drain Coverage. And just list what it is. Just a plastic mat.
I was curious, because some of them deteriorate after a while.
Yeah, so this, yeah, this, no, no, no. This one is heavy outdoor vehicle traffic, and it shows the maximum exposure, storm zero to 120 degrees.
And there was, do you mind if I add one?
No, no.
So, I did some research on this, and I think this is a decent proposal here.
Great.
In addition to this, I know that there are some companies where they have, there's a company called New Pig, and they have this, they have a cover where it's kept in a cylinder. It's not that big, and you could keep it in the storage room and add it to the spill plan. So that what that does is that, if there is a spill, so in addition to what's already existing there, it rolls out over that beyond it, and it has more of a tacky surface to it, so it becomes more impenetrable than what this is. So it would be secondary.
Oh, for outside?
For the outside drain.
So, but that's what this, that's what this drain cover is?
This does, but since it's being picked up every day-
Right.
So the one that, the one that I was thinking as a secondary measure to keep in the storage closet would be, in the event of a spill, then this would be, this would be-
Put on top of-
Put on top of it, and you can get it in different lengths.
Right, right.
I know that there's a number of biotech companies that have this, they keep it in the loading dock.
Right.
But with the location of that storage closet, and it's not that big, they come in actual, you can purchase it with the tube where it zips out.
Yeah, same company.
Same company.
Same company as this.
Would you be willing to add that as additional?
I don't see why we wouldn't, I mean, just more expense for something that we don't think we're ever going to use, but-
Yeah, and that's only like, in a spill situation, it's used in that instance, so it's not something that-
So, we're covering the drain-
Yeah.
But then saying, "cover the cover of the drain," is what I think I'm-
Right, as a secondary measure. So the, so this cover here is, you're putting it out every day, which is unusual.
Yeah, we're putting it out so that we expect deliveries at 2:00, but if they came at 1:30, then we wouldn't have had it out there in time, right? So what we're doing is, the maintenance comes in in the morning, puts the, covers them, and then picks them up at night when they leave.
Sure.
But it's the same, it's the same material that-
But this is a little bit different, because this is, this is sticky, it actually tacks down onto it. It's a yellow rollout.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's a one-time use, that if there is a spill, and again, this is, the drain here goes into the, essentially into the watershed.
Right, right.
So that's where my, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable with the application.
I'd definitely be willing to look into that. I don't know that particular item, but I could look into that.
You can continue.
So, it says here that they're good for up to one year, so you'd be okay with replacing them every year?
Yeah, we replace as needed. So we've already replaced the one that was already out there. So they, you know, they've been utilizing since they opened, I guess, October, so they've already replaced that one already.
Do you have any other questions, Deb, or do you want to move down the line? Chris, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Go.
One of the same lines as Brian. The cover that you showed us-
Yes.
That was there, it just looks like water could seep underneath it, so, yeah, it's like something could-
Yeah, the description and the specifications I did send over, so it is the designated for this specific purpose, for spills, or even water. So it is intended to protect and not have spills go down the drain with this cover on. That's what, this is the particular one I'm referring to.
Is this cover that you're talking about, the one that was approved by the Fire and Board of Health?
The one, the one they have there, yes, and this is, this is a vendor that I pulled up that has the same, the same technology.
Okay. Yeah, I'm glad that we did the site visit. I noticed that the cover that was currently there on the site visit, it didn't seem to have that nice suction level spirit to it, so-
Right.
So it's nice that these would get inspected.
I just have one more question about the drain covers. In a heavy rainstorm, or with snow melting, they really shouldn't be down?
Right, correct.
So you'll take those up when it's-
So, they remove them if it's raining, and they need to make sure that there's drainage, and then they pick them up at night, so that it, we're not there at night, but we're not expecting deliveries at night, or receiving deliveries at night.
Dave, do you have any questions on the line?
No, I don't have any questions.
And then the, this, the response team, is that completely on-site? The spill response team?
The spill response team would be called in, so the staff will be trained to manage spills, and then call for anything that goes above the small.
Okay.
And then we have the vendors listed in the spill plan, of who we would call, and which, in which order to do that, and whatnot. 911, Fire Department, all of the other entities that should be notified, if there were any spill that, that had any breach.
Right. And then the, you had mentioned the, the cover for the downspout in the closet.
Yes.
So that goes out to the sewer anyway? So I don't think that a cover would be necessary.
Just a drain plug, but yeah.
Yeah, when we had talked about it at the previous meeting-
Right.
It wasn't certain whether that was to the sewer or not, so since it's a sewer, I don't think that we need to include that as a condition to put that. Does everybody agree with that? Are you okay with that, Dave?
Yeah.
But one of the conditions I would personally like to add is that, that product where it is more of a tacky surface going down, where it's, it's really sealed in the event of a spill.
Okay.
That's something-
So, this is, it's, this, this one is the super sealing urethane bottom layer, conforms to uneven surfaces, tightly seals the drain openings, and blocks liquid. That's what this is.
My only concern with that is that it's, it's coming up after every delivery, so you're getting dirt and substance attached to it, so that, that adhesion isn't going to be as heavy. So this is actually a more-
Sure. Just second layer of protection.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, that's right.
What's it called?
Yeah, it's a company called New Pig.
That's, this is New Pig as well.
Yeah, so the, so what it is, it's a more heavy-duty rollout. And the length, so this, this is set to sort of fit on top, this can actually go beyond And that's all I had for, so if that can be added as a condition on- Anything else from Board members? So, I think at this time, is there any comments from the public that they would like to share? Okay, nothing from the public? So at this point, I guess we can go through the, the conditions, so they're showing here on the board, Nora?
Yes.
Okay, great. Do you want to read, read each one? For the record?
Applicants show register hazardous materials with the Board of Health and re-register on a biannual basis. Future changes in composition or quantity shall require prior written approval with an amendment to the special permit unless determined to be de minimis. Applicants shall contact Health and Fire for initial and subsequent inspection of facility. Applicant is responsible for obtaining any in other, any other required approvals. Each delivery shall be inspected by trained personnel before receiving and accepting any material. Staff and delivery personnel shall be trained to handle and inspect all deliveries of hazardous material. Emergency and spill response materials shall be kept in a loading slash delivery area at all times. Drain covers for all storm drains shall be in place in advance of all hazardous materials. And I'd like to add that, that they should be inspected and replaced as needed and/or every 12 months. And, the other one is called-
The, it's just more of a, it's a more robust pad.
A secondary drain cover shall be provided in the event of an additional spill?
Yeah, so it's, so it's stored.
Stored in, within the facility?
Yeah.
Okay. Up-to-date data and material sheets are in an accessible location. And, I believe that's it, the conditions.
And then the, the other thing, just related to that, so of course, the, the training plan, what you'd want to add to the training plan, that secondary cover, and then just add an update to the spill response, just to include that as an additional measure.
Yes.
Yeah. So, are there any more comments or discussion from the Board members? So, Nora, at this point, do we go to a vote?
Yes. You have an affidavit from Chris Path, of his confirmation of the evidential review.
Great, thanks, Chris.
So, I make a motion to approve the special permit as requested by Partners Urgent Care with the following conditions that we've already gone over.
And Nora, for this particular vote, so, we're going to be doing it by roll call, so do we do it individually, or just as a?
You do it individually. So first, you'll need a second on the motion, and then you call each member individually and request their vote.
Okay. So did you make a motion?
I made the motion.
I hear a motion, do we hear a second?
Second.
I hear a motion and a second, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
One at a time, so if you can call each member by name.
So, Dave Atkins, what is your? Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Brian Gorman says aye as well. So the motion passes, 5 to 0.
All right, thank you very much.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, do I hear a second?
Check.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Again, you have to have a roll call vote.
Dave, Dave on the phone?
Aye, vote aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Aye as well. So the, we close the hearing? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. The second agenda item is 1163 Reynolds Farm Way, High Street Accessors Map, 34 Lot, 043 Reynolds Farm Modification Request. Is there somebody here representing the?
So we have Ed Musto representing the developer, we have John Glossa, his attorney, and we have Mike Terry representing the town.
So, how do you want to proceed? So we've got two parts here.
We do.
Sort of all participating. Do we want to have the applicants, you know, maybe John, or should we have Mike cut to the chase and discuss sort of the nature of the agreement, and then we can get into the details?
So I'd recommend having John walk you through the plan changes. I can put the plan up on the screen, and then, after that, hear from Mike about the agreement.
Good evening. Benny Gordon, Conservation Commission. My name is John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46 East Street in East Walthall. And, as Nora said, I'm here with Ed Musto, and his attorney, kind of rolled that into one. I'm not his attorney, is your attorney here, Ed?
So, it's-
Okay, well, Mike Terry's here, I think, who can handle that sort of stuff. So, I will just quickly read from the list that I generated. There may be a few things missing here, but let me just read from these, and then I can answer questions, or if somebody points out that I missed something, we can go from there. So the first one would be the planting area that was shown on the original plan in the cul-de-sac, so way up at the end of the driveway. Originally, in the middle, that was a planting area. We're requesting that the plantings not be installed, and that the area, and that that be replaced with a stamped asphalt island. And that mostly, I wouldn't say 100%, but mostly was at the request of the Westwood Fire Department. The second one was the drain, so, or starting with the drain, down in the left front corner of the property is the underground infiltration basin, and above that was this baby pool, so-called. And the function of the baby pool was that, in order for us to make sure that we were capturing every drop of water up to the 100-year storm, we were shy by about an eighth of an inch, so the peer reviewer at the time suggested we put this sort of pool above the underground infiltration basin that would capture the, capture the water and not let the water out. So we're going to get rid of that. We're going to replace that with just loam and seed at the grades that are pretty much just matching from the top of it to the bottom of it, and it'll be grassed. And then there'll be four inspection ports over the infiltration basin at each corner. So, the other thing that came out of the peer review was that, and this is number two on the list, was that the peer reviewer asked, and we do normally do this as a matter, of course, is to put the roof drains into individual underground, usually cul-de-sacs, some sort of leach chamber. In this case, and I don't want to get back and review the whole thing, but when I first did this job, we identified, or there had been identified previously that there was some drainage deficiencies with land across the street, and in some neighborhoods down below this site. So, we had, actually, if you went back through the drainage calculations, you would see that the rate and volumes of runoff in all storms that were modeled were reduced by quite a bit. So we didn't bother with the roof drains. And some areas on this site have great soils, have soils that we did percolation tests at the time, two minutes an inch and less. And in the very front of the site, we actually hired Peter Fletcher, sort of a renowned soil scientist, worked for the USGS for many years, and now teaches the soil evaluator courses. We had him look at that, at the soil in the front, and determine that the water table was about 19 or 20 feet down, and that the soil was a loamy sand, and I know that might not mean a lot to you, but good soil, soil that drains very quickly with a deep water table. So, we didn't put those roof drains in, I mean, those, we didn't show them originally. The peer reviewer asked them, we put them on the plan, but now I think we're finding that they are not necessary, and actually have the potential, at least on some of the units, of doing the opposite, and, you know, not really allowing the water to sort of run into the infiltration areas where the good soils are, but trying to put water into the ground where the, where the best soils aren't. So, we're asking that those be, that the, there be a condition to not allow those to be built. We added a lot, in a lot of areas behind the units, some infiltration trenches to sort of wick the water away from the backyards. The residents have found, especially in the springtime, that the backyards are a little spongy, and that that's really not a desirable condition. So, we've shown these underground shallow trenches, which essentially are stone with perforated pipe, and above them, some loamy, some very loamy, or some very sandy loam, right? So sandy topsoil. I've actually done this in a few places, at golf courses, where there's been some problem areas where the superintendent wanted some areas dried out, and it works very well. And since this water ends up in the, one or, either one or both of the infiltration basins, it's not really changing the design at all, so it has no impact on the design that we did originally. An area that was a construction problem is sort of that V at the, where the properties sort of, I think that's on the north side. The head wall there was not really constructed in accordance with the plan, and so we just provided, with a little help from Beta, a little bit of a remedy that will make that head wall look and function better. The revisions to the drain system on High Street actually were done by the town of Westwood, and so our plan really just shows it as built. It's different, a little bit different than what was proposed, but it's how it was built. I think it's, it's working great now, and as long as, you know, once, or, once the drainage on this site is completely constructed, then you should have no problems with the water that gets to that low spot on High Street. The above-ground drainage basin, we're asking that it be, you know, graded as, on the, shown on the originally approved plan, and then the side slopes along the driveway that are nearest to the outlet structure, so sort of to the right, as you're looking at it, would be riprap, that's a little bit steeper slope. And then the remaining, so going towards the back, towards the left end of the, of the site, that slope would remain loamed and seeded. And then a maintenance equipment access ramp to be installed at the very westerly end of the basin, that was not shown on the original plan, and that was actually asked for by the Conservation Commission. There's sort of a hand-dug trench in the front of 61 and 63, we're just saying that that needs to have some riprap and some stabilization. And then, the four-inch drain pipe from the, there's an area drain just to the right of units 61 and 63. We're asking that that remain, that the pipe that it discharges to at the above-ground basin be uncovered, and the end of that stabilized with riprap. And then that drain actually does become a discharge point for one of our underground shallow infiltration trenches used to wick water away. So that unit 61, 63 seems to have a little bit of a problem- So that unit 61, 63 seems to have a little bit of a problem with surface water. When we connect the rooftop downspouts to the drain system, I think that'll take care of a lot of it. But we're also going to add the shallow infiltration drain to help the area drain. It helps the grass grow better and thicker and the problem will go away. And then retaining walls and grading. So the existing retaining wall behind unit 11 through unit 23 will remain as constructed. Caps will be installed on the wall per manufacturer's instructions. So that wall's going to stop a little bit shorter than the wall that was shown on the original plan. Concrete or masonry stairs or granite, I guess, will be installed from the backyard level to the upper-level area behind unit 41. That was something that was asked for by the unit owners. Two four-foot-high retaining walls, a lower wall and an upper wall. So a total of eight feet will be constructed behind and to the left of unit 43. And then the slope behind unit 41 through unit, unit 31 through unit 41 will be regraded to a two-to-one slope, loamed and seeded. So right now, it's kind of rough. It's a little bit steeper than three-to-one. It doesn't have any loam on it. It doesn't have any seed on it. And then the breakout barrier behind unit 31 through unit 43, that was shown on the original approved plans, that was sort of behind that wall and all, that was going to go there. We're asking that that not be installed. And then there was some significant additional, now I'm under landscaping, additional changes to the landscaping, additions to the landscaping, mostly between the neighbors along High Street and the above-ground retention basin, where there was a number of spruce and, not pine, but anyway, a number of trees. I would thank Abby and Karen for helping me out with the design of that. And then we added a sheet that shows shrub and irrigation, underground irrigation system. So I may have missed a few things, but basically that was the list that I had put together. So if you would like me to answer questions, I could answer questions now.
If I could just add one thing you didn't touch on were the fences. There've been privacy screening fences added between the units. And one unit, unit two, right here, has the screening units, not just between the rear decks, but going all the way to the back to the wall. So that's different than what was in the original plan.
Yeah.
Do you want to add anything else to what Nora just mentioned for those?
No, but other than, yeah, I forgot that. But the one that's probably maybe more important to the planning board, I mean, the other ones are just, go to the ends of the deck, right? But at the first building on the right, so unit 13, that one, or you saw it in the field, actually, extends all the way back to the wall in the back.
Have you completed your presentation?
I have. So if you, I can either...
Sure.
Take questions or I can sit down.
Might make sense to go through, yeah, technical questions on the grading and drainage and anything else, I suppose, fences, walls, and however you want to do it. So we can go across to the board, to the, to the planning board first, then we can come back.
I just wanted to ask, Nora, are there any questions, any comments from staff that you wanted to share?
The only comment that we had, the plan seems to be appropriate. We've had it reviewed by Phil Paradis for Beta. He recommends approval of all the changes that are proposed. The only one that I think staff has some concern about are those fences that go all the way back to the wall because they impede access along that wall, which can make it difficult for landscaping maintenance, but also restricts passage through that area. So the way this was originally designed, the planning board intended to function as most condominium units do, where the owners have their individual areas right adjacent to their home, but that there's the ability for all owners to walk throughout the property. So that's something that the board may want to consider.
And was that intended for the common area?
It was originally considered common area, but the way that this is fenced off now, it takes it out of the common area.
And do you, are there any other comments from staff?
There are not, other than the idea that these plans were very carefully reviewed and we worked on the terms of an agreement for about a year and a half. It was a very lengthy and difficult negotiation. And I don't think there's a whole lot of flexibility. So that if you, if there's something that's concerning either board, absolutely bring it up. But if there's not, I don't think there's too much opportunity to make changes at this point.
So I was thinking we could start from, from your end. Do you want to come down if there's any questions or comments that you have with regards to...
Did you have a question, Ed?
I only wanted a comment to go with the...
You're going to need a microphone. Yeah, sorry about that. At the podium.
I do wonder if it wouldn't be first appropriate to sort of go down the line for questions and comments and if there are specific items that need to be addressed.
Well, I figure if the applicant has any other statement before we do that, then we can just get going.
Ed Musto, the applicant, the developer. Regarding the fence that is behind unit number 13, at the time, the prospective unit owner asked me if we could put a fence there. And as the trustee, I allowed for the fence. That area behind the unit is, it is common area, but it's dedicated to exclusive use to the unit owner. And I didn't see a problem putting the fence back there. At the time, the unit owner, the prospective unit owner, had a dog. And just to keep the dog confined, that was the purpose for putting the fence up. Now, the fence is there. I gave permission to the unit owner to put the fence there. There is one gate into that pendant area. Maybe the thing to do would be put a gate on the other side of the pendant area so that if the landscaper has to go in there and cut the lawn, he can go in, he can cut the lawn, open up the other gate, continue on his merry way.
We'll do it so we can see how the different boards feel about that. Why don't we just hold a quick, because I just... For once, can you just grab the microphone for this? And then after your comment, we're going to go back to the, we're going to go back to the board, questions and comments.
I don't have a problem removing the fence. At the time, when I signed the contract, it was to make sure I had that fence for my dog, my aging dog. I don't have that particular dog anymore. Ed was very kind and let me do that. And speaking with many of the trustees and whatnot, I don't have a problem having that fence taken down.
That's great.
And to put up the regular one that you all have, just so we're consistent. I'm not crazy about it anyways.
That's fine. But just for the, just for time, thank you for that comment. It's very helpful.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know so you don't waste any more time.
Yeah, that's fine. That's appreciated. So Todd, questions and comments?
No. Nora, you guys, you guys, Mike Terry, you guys have all spent a lot of time putting this together.
We have. We looked very closely at it as Beta has reviewed it very closely as well and feel that it's, all the changes that were requested are appropriate changes.
Okay. I, you guys have spent all the time with it. I have a problem with, with anything that you guys have said.
Okay. Head down the line.
So I think the changes that you have proposed, adding more screen vegetation along the edges, it's all very good, very positive. One question that I have is I see two shade trees at the very entrance of the road. It's not clear, there is an X, whether those are proposed or...
These two trees here?
Yes.
Here, they are proposed. The X is over the number three, which was, formerly, they were proposed as Cleveland pears. And now they're number one, which are sugar maples. So it's just a change in the species.
Change of species. Just a question whether the site, the site angles have been checked. I'm just a little concerned there. I know that High Street curves there and merging into traffic might be blocked by the tree.
I think it is far enough up that it's not a problem, but we did have Phil look at that and we will have the site, site views checked again before the trees are actually installed.
Okay. That's all I have.
That was actually the only comment I had, certainly not in Concom's purview, but looking at the reviews. Anything that we would have purview over, I'm comfortable with the changes that were made on the drainage. I think it's a marked improvement and I'm glad we're getting close to resolution for this.
Yeah, I agree. The only question I had, Nora, the DPW made the fixes to the...
They did.
The street drains and there was driveway and grading and vegetation.
It was about $20,000 worth of work, a little bit more than that. They could not wait for the agreement to be finalized. There were flooding concerns that were nuisance. So the DPW took on the work, hired it out, had the work done. And the town will address that at a later time. We're really just interested in moving forward with the project at this point.
And then I said, one question with regards to the, you talked about the, the end spout in the basin, the basin where you said it was going to be opened up? Was it in the basin?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Okay, maybe, during your presentation, maybe I misunderstood what you were speaking of. Yeah, so it sounded like you were, there was a downspout that you were going to...
So that's right, I believe. Yeah, there's a drain in between.
We're going to, you know, endeavor to tie all of the downspouts into the drainage system. Because it's our belief that the downspouts are creating some problems for the unit owners that they really don't need to suffer because the whole drainage design is based on infiltration of the water into the ground. And the location of the two drainage basins were based on extensive soils exploration. So, but unfortunately, and I already took the hit for this, it was my fault. You know, I caved to the peer reviewer and said, okay, if that's what you want, that's what we'll give you. But it was a mistake, especially those units on the right side as you're going up. That's not a good place to try to stick water back into the ground because it doesn't want to go in there.
Okay.
So it's creating a little bit of a problem.
Okay. Deb? Chris?
No questions, just happy to see this finally resolved. It's been a long time.
Bill?
No, I just, I don't know exactly how we got here, you know? Obviously, it was a mistake at the beginning of the planning for this, for the drainage and what have you. It's correct. Am I correct?
I, well, my insurance company would tell me never, you made a mistake. I didn't make a mistake. I can tell you this. What I just said to the chairman, we endeavored for more than a year because we wanted to make sure, because it's an unusual site, that we were citing the infiltration basin, and that there's two of them, in the proper location, in an area where the water table was deep enough below the ground and the soils were friable, were granular enough to accept water. And we did that. But in our, you know, attempt to get approvals from the board, and the board often hires experts, I, you know, essentially caved in to, you know, not the planning board, to the expert and did something that I didn't think was, you know, the best thing to do.
Okay. So then the, I want to make sure that we deal with that fence. So I would prefer that that, the fencing at unit one and two get pulled back in concordance and open up that open area. Does everybody else want to give their opinions on how they would like that to be changed?
No, I agree. It's supposed to be the common area, which is part of the senior residential development, so it should be pulled back.
Any, does anybody not agree with that? And then Dave, do you have any questions or comments on the phone?
I have a couple of things. So yeah, I agree with that, too. I practically think that's pulled back. And then I'm just happy to see this is getting resolved. I just hope that they pay attention to the, those units in the back. When we went out there and looked at it on the site, if you go all the way to the unit that's on the, at the very end on the left and there's a big drainage problem in there that was...
Yeah, that's unit 11. We have it on the screen here.
So I mean, that's, I think that there's the plan to address, you know, to address that. And now we're getting work, it's going to be happening. So just so we hope they'll pay attention to that because it seems like it was, it still, it could still be a problem, you know? But it just needs to be, get the water to go away from that basement and get it out of there because that's kind of, that was a real mess. So, but otherwise, yeah, I think I'm pleased with what everyone has said so far with the plan.
Could I just clarify for the record? The plan shows it as unit 11, that's the unit number, but the address is actually 61 Reynolds Way.
Thank you. And then would the, would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments that you've heard from the board?
Well, obviously, there's no objection to the fence because the unit owner has agreed to go back to the privacy fence, assuming the board's going to go along with the smaller privacy fence that's between each decks.
And then I had one other comment, the, so where, where that V comes down, the wall looked like it was almost completed. Is that going to be fixed in the final plan? We did a site visit.
The head wall you're talking about?
Yeah, so if you're walking up, that's exactly right. Yeah, so like even the caps weren't complete on them.
Right. The caps aren't on there. So, and the pipe sticks in too far from the wall. So what we came up with, with Beta, was to create a second wall. So that wall now is sort of like this and that pipe's going out at this angle. So we're going to create a second wall that would be 90 degrees to the pipe end. So that's more conventional head wall. And then the part that's sort of to the left as you're standing at the street, that'll get buried. You won't even see that. And then the rest of it...
Then what about vegetation in front of it? Because it looks, it looks a bit unkept right in front of that wall.
Yeah, it's not finished. So that would be loamed and seeded, that whole area, once it's done.
Okay. Do you have any other comments to what we've talked about here?
No, other than I've, I've heard what you said and I've heard what the planning board said. At unit 61, we do recognize that there's an issue there. I do think a lot of it goes away when you tie the downspouts directly into the above-ground infiltration basin because a lot of runoff, most of it, comes from paved surfaces or impervious surfaces, of which a roof is an impervious surface. So there's four downspouts that are from, you know, two from unit 51 and 53 and two from unit 61 and 63 that are discharging their water right to that location. Once those are gone, and then we are going to put in the infiltration trench and regrade it so that the grade nearer the foundation goes away from the foundation, not towards it. And once we do that, I am 100% sure that that problem goes away.
Did you have a comment?
I just have one question. Has there been conversation about the schedule yet?
But that's not my, I'm the engineer. There's agreements that are outside of my...
And then, so if you're complete, I wanted to open up to the public if anybody wanted to get up and have questions or comments. So sure. So you can just line up at the microphone so that everybody can hear you at home as well.
Rebecca Fittis, number 13. So we discussed the fence and whatnot and hopefully that will get resolved. I'm concerned about the water that's coming into unit 11, which is attached to my unit on the end there. That, as long as I've lived there, there has been water in that basement and it's just been allowed to sit. And I'm very concerned about the structure in there. We have not been able to get in there and check it out. I don't know if anybody else has. I know there's a sign out that's for sale now. I just want some assurance, since I'm attached to that unit, that that water, whichever, whatever the reason is, that it's coming in that basement and has been for a good year or two, is resolved. So I don't know where we go from that, but I think that's something that needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Nora, did you want to respond to that since...
So that unit has an under-drain, a foundation drain, that's not tied into anything. So once this... So once this construction is allowed to, and it's on the plan, once this is allowed to proceed again, that underdrain's going to be tied into the catch basin that's right in front of the unit at the low end. And again, we're not trying to drain all the water off of the site and put it on someone else's site. That goes into the underground infiltration basin. So there shouldn't be any reason why that water won't drain away from the building. So I hope that...
One more question on that.
If you just grab the microphone again.
Rebecca Fittis again. What kind of damage can be caused when its water has been sitting in that cement in the basement for a couple of years? What kind of damage structurally happens? That's my question.
Well, unfortunately ma'am, I've never been in that unit, so I can't answer your question directly.
But then who can?
Well, if you can let me go inside, or if someone lets me inside, I can tell you. Okay, so I can't really...
Mike Terry, Special Counsel for the town. That's the unfinished unit, so that unit will be inspected, so with building permits, et cetera, so, you know, it'll go through the same process.
Because it's been sitting, and I heard all kinds of ghost stories about undermining the structure of the building, and it just...
Oh, if you want to grab the microphone again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm dying.
Okay. Great, sure. Can you just state your name and your address, please?
So, Janne Ball, Sorry, and I'm located at 31 Reynolds Farm Way. And I just had one question for John. So the grading behind the units you had said goes to Unit 41? Did you mean 31? Because that's what we had discussed. Can you just double check your notes on that?
The grading?
The regrading of the property in the back of the units. You had mentioned a parameter from, I think, your unit, which is number 41? No. You had said it would end at 41 and it was supposed to be regraded right through to 31.
So, John, if I might help, looking at, the drawing in Appendix A is showing a series of French drains across the backs of, essentially starting at Number 41 or even 43, goes to a center drain between 33 and 41, and then it continues in legs between the various buildings, ending at between 23 and 31.
And 31, right.
Okay, well, I'm sorry if I misspoke, the plans of speech...
That's all I want, I just wanted to clarify that you misspoke and that it wasn't really... Okay, and then also on your fence, the fence behind Unit 11, I just want to also clarify that it's not two fences that are being pulled back, it's one fence that's being dropped and the other fence is being pulled back so that it will be, it will be in accordance with all the rest of the units. Okay, that's, okay.
That's it, that's all I had. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the public? Sure. I wonder if you just grab the mic. Thank you.
Mike Cohane, I'm in Unit 41, and this question's for John. I was just wondering, we have also, there's not just the water issues with Building 11. Are we going to have, like, is it going to be according to plan, like there's infiltration trenches? Can I go up to the board here?
Sure.
You need a microphone.
You just grab the mic when you walk up.
Okay. Thank you. There's, so these are going to be in here, this infiltration trench here between 6 and 7, which is 35 and 41.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and is this going to be tied, because there's a big water problem with 6, right?
Water in the basement. But they're all tied in to the catch, to the catch basins that are in the rear, and then they will, again, we're not dumping these out on someone else's property.
Right, oh, no, no.
They'll stay within the infiltration, either the above-ground or the below-ground infiltration.
Right. So this is going to be newly installed, because nothing there now.
All in green.
All in green is newly installed. And regraded, right, so the water goes into this trench, water's going into these trenches, so we don't have, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. Could you just help us out on that wall right there? What's it going to be made out of? I know Margie's very concerned.
Well...
Do we have any idea what the wall's going to be made out of?
I'm shocked.
Well, Margie, so it's going to be a modular block wall. An allen block wall, Ed, an allen block wall. We can send you some catalogs, some pictures, you can choose color. Usually these are 18-inch blocks, so, you know, it's a heavy-duty wall, but it's a modular wall, but there's different styles, different looks, different colors, so...
This may be too personal, but am I...
Please use the microphone.
This may be digging down to the weeds too much and too personal to me, but am I, once we get this all going, am I free to work with a developer and to add to the plan at my own expense?
Any changes to the plan need the approval of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Okay, that's fine. It's nothing radical.
Yeah.
I just want some stones.
Yeah.
I've waited for my stones.
One more question, John. On the...
The slope between where the wall ends now, which is building number 4, I guess, and up to, what is it, 43?
Yeah.
I think on the plan it says the slope is 3 to 1.
The slope will be 3 to 1.
Oh, 3 to 1, because you said 2 to 1 earlier. So it's going to be 3 to 1 there?
3 to 1, I misspoke.
Okay, 3 to 1, yeah.
3 to 1, and a set of stairs that I believe are going to be made out of granite, right, a granite set of steps to get up to sort of that higher level.
Clean, keep that clear, yeah.
Keep it clear and take your dog for a walk.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
I have one.
Just grab the mic and you're all set. So they can't hear you at home, that's the only thing. You can use this if you'd like.
I know the plan is showing...
It's okay.
I know, I know the plan is showing riprap along the northerly, easterly slope in the detention basin.
Here to here.
Yeah, from, in this area. We planted in that area and it stabilized, and I guess one of the questions I have is, is the riprap wall necessary? The original plan showed luminescence, there were some plantings in that banking as well. But that wall is, that wall, that turf is stabilized and...
Yeah, it's beside now. Yeah, it's on that line.
It's not even stable.
And there are a lot more trees, this tree count is far and away five times, six times more than what I had originally proposed to put on the plan. If you look at the original filing, I mean, so all I'm asking for is, if we don't need the riprap along that slope, we are giving the abutters a lot more trees. Is it possible to forego that riprap on that slope? Where, maybe it's an engineer's question, I don't know, I just...
If I could just comment, our peer review engineer, Phil Paradis, reviewed that and feels very strongly that the riprap is needed, not only for stability but for maintenance purposes. He doesn't believe that a grass slope can be maintained.
I would agree.
I would agree.
Can we take a moment?
Please use the microphone.
That soil was already washed away, and I believe that the contractor that did that project, Fraser, had to come back in and re-soil some of the place after the first rainstorm, the big rainstorm, we had it all washed out, one section. So it does need the riprap there, you know, or else we're going to be having problems. It's probably steeper than 2 to 1 at, at some spots, it's steeper than 2 to 1. And it's soil, it's all going to wash away. We need the riprap.
Just for the record, when the contractor...
So if you could either come to the microphone or get him the microphone, I would suggest that if you're going to review this same topic, that there may not be any benefit to anyone here in doing that?
I'm just asking.
Well, I'm just, and I'm suggesting that the details have been resolved for the most part. If there's any changes that are needed, which I haven't heard of any, then we might entertain further discussion on that. If not, any other questions or comments? So if we could have, maybe Mike, could you come up and just give us maybe an overview of the agreement, maybe, I guess, significant high points? I know one item that the conservation needs to consider is the extension of the existing order and the timing for that. I know that for us, that's probably, you know, the sort of largest item. It looks like all the technical details have been resolved and approved and reviewed and approved by the town's engineer.
Right, so as you know, the biggest concern from our perspective was getting this project completed, especially the infrastructure that wasn't done. So we had limited resources to do that because this is all on private property, so we didn't have a bond. So what, eventually what happened was the homeowners filed suit, brought an action against the developer. We entered into a mediation process with counsel for the developer and myself for the town and counsel for the homeowners. And we went through a lengthy mediation negotiation process. We've come up with an agreement that everyone has signed off on after many, many iterations of it. We've reviewed the plans both by Beta and with John's help. We have some modified plans, I certainly would recommend that you approve the modified plans as they stand. So essentially what we ended up with is a process where he's got a deadline to actually do the work, once the clock starts ticking after he gets the approvals that he needs here. There's money set aside in an escrow account. We have a scheduled work that needs to be done with prices, estimated prices for that work. And then we have a approval process with Phil from Beta and with John Glasa, and a third party if there's a disagreement. So we're going to work our way through the project, they're going to approve payment, payment comes out of the fund that we have, finish the project, and there's money left over, that goes back to the developer. If there's essentially a default on the part of the developer, he doesn't do the work, doesn't complete it in time, et cetera, then the homeowners can step in and access the funds and complete the work themselves. So that's essentially the framework that we ended up with. So, you know, from the town's end, we're happy. The homeowners have signed off on it, Mr. Mostow and his group have signed off on it as well, so I hope we get a thumbs up today and we finally get this put to bed.
Good, thank you for the overview. That's good. I've been through the document, maybe not every word, but I've been through a lot.
I don't recommend that.
No.
So we end up with a 90-day or 110-day timetable, depending on how you measure the starting date?
Well, I see, and there was a 90-day in regards to the work completion, was that?
Yeah, 90 days from the date of the end of the hearing.
Right.
The end of the appeal period.
The appeal period. We have a 90-day period, but there's a 20-day appeal period, so...
So that's actually a longer extension though, because your order of conditions expired effective June 18th.
Right.
You have a standing request for an extension, so you're, you can extend it to whatever degree you feel is necessary, but a minimum of 90 days from the end of the extension of the appeal period, so a minimum of 110 days from today is necessary to comply with the agreement.
And at which time, we would hope to see everything, and if everything is fine, approved by the town's review engineer, via site inspections, as-built plans, vegetation viability, I don't know if it's, you know, we can prove survivability in that relatively short period of time.
So the way the agreement is written, there's a carve-out for the viability of the plants to be beyond that period of time?
Yeah, usually it's a year period, right?
Okay. Yeah, so we would probably withhold final certificate of compliance until such time as all of those, those have been, requirements have been met, or we have some site agreement that essentially allows for that extension of time. Yeah, so any, any other discussion? To me, that seems like the major one, you know, in an ideal condition, we would give ourselves enough time for that vegetation to be established as well as all the other work, so to see that the whole site is stabilized. Well, the majority of the site's been stabilized and it's really just about getting the final vegetation, finally, in the quality that we hope for, and then, you know, give enough time to validate that its survivability over some further length of time before issuing a full certificate of compliance over the site. So are there any concerns? To me, it makes sense to extend it to maybe try and coincide, frankly, with the construction plus some, another 30 days, 60 days, something probably that gets us to the end of the year, gives all of the fall for vegetation to be planted and has a chance to be established, at least at some level. Anybody have any, any commission members have any concerns about that?
Yeah.
Schedule? Let's go through the commission and the planning board, and then we'll get to focus on the audience.
So, go ahead.
Are you saying that we're going to, you proposed we extend it to the 1st of 2020?
No, go to the end of this year.
Okay.
Why?
So let's, so we'll come, let's talk here amongst the...
He's not talking about the deadline for completing the work, he's talking about the extension of the order of conditions.
Yes.
So the work can be done.
The framework to allow him to complete the project, right? The timeframe.
No, the timeframe for performing the work is stipulated in the agreement to be 90 days plus the 20-day appeal period, so 110 days effectively, I think, as I'm understanding. Yeah, the work would be completed. That is the agreement, that's the agreement. We have jurisdiction over the order of conditions that have been issued, that have in fact expired, but we've continued in order to be able to consider now how we extend the order further. And we could extend that for as long as we want. We think we should align generally with getting the work completed, having an opportunity to inspect it, make any adjustments, and then we can decide if there's anything left and whether we issue a certificate of compliance at that time, which I would expect we wouldn't want to based on final growth of the plants to prove that they've survived, because some of these areas are a little of concern. And at that time, once we are satisfied with that, then we would issue an order of conditions. That might be another six months past that, it might be a year past that.
So basically like 110 days roughly?
Yes, for the construction.
That sounds fair to me.
So some of the vegetation might be established by that time, turf fills in fairly quickly. However, for trees, typically what we see in a trade is one year to see if they survive. I don't think that should be part of this order of condition.
The DVP standard is two years.
Yeah, could be, could be two years, but one year standard for private projects that I've worked on.
So I think that's something we can, you know, further consider as we get to the end of the extension. I think it makes sense for us to determine now, and again, make it just slightly longer than the stipulated agreement to give us a chance to, just frankly, to have this discussion more fully and see what conditions. It could be that the trees we see out there really look great and we think we're all done. I doubt it very much. I don't, like, we might see some, like you're saying, low vegetation shrubs, could be fine, and we could feel very comfortable. I would not be comfortable at that time though of giving final approval on the trees unless I see something very unusual. Helen, do you have any?
I would pretty much concur. I think my recommendation would be no longer than the end of this year and for us to reevaluate.
Do we want to continue down the line unless there's any more comments?
I'm fine with that.
Paul, to you.
Dave, Dave on the line, anything from you?
No, I don't have anything.
Yes, we're all set.
Yeah, should we go to anyone else that wants to comment on what we just discussed, really, which is really about the timing and the final acceptance of vegetation? Yes, sir, could you step up to the microphone, name and address, please?
Certainly, Walter Williams, Unit 23. In addition to all the stuff that's going to be done, there is still a lot of construction debris hanging all around the place that there's no reason for it to be there even now, that we would like... That we would like to see it removed as soon as possible, if it isn't necessary for the completion of the projects.
Absolutely. Mike, I expect you, that was part of the discussion, and.
Well, his obligation is to complete the project in accordance with the plan, so that would include removing materials that are not supposed to be there, certainly. But, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so it would clearly be, you know, part of our final review and approval is to make sure all of the, you know, various debris that occurs after construction, sometimes takes a while to get cleaned up, and that should be, yes.
Phil, again, Phil from Beta will be, you know, monitoring the progress, so I'm sure if there's something there that's not supposed to be there, he can certainly bring it to their attention.
Okay.
So I think, I think we're fine from a planning board perspective. You fine? Okay.
Do you make separate motions?
Separate motions, separate votes. So if I could just speak to procedure a little bit? The first vote for each, both the conservation commission and the planning board, is to vote to find that this is a minor modification to the existing approvals. So a minor modification to the order of conditions, a minor modification to the special permit. Unless you find that that's the case, then you're not at a proper setting for a vote. So that's the first step. If you do find that they're minor approvals, then I'd recommend the conservation commission take each of its votes first, a vote to extend the order of conditions by a specified time period, and a vote to modify the order of conditions. And after that's complete, then I recommend that the planning board take its three votes, that you find it a minor modification, and, I'm sorry, two votes for the planning board. You find a minor modification, and then you approve that minor modification.
All right. Yeah, so maybe this might just take a little, little bit of time here procedurally. Yeah, so I think we're all in agreement here. I haven't heard any overwhelming, you know, concerns about the timing. So I would move that we extend the order of conditions. I'm not exactly sure what the right, you know, the minor modification.
First, could you just take a vote on the minor modification?
For the minor modification. Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Any further discussion? Let's go down the line. In favor, Todd Sullivan?
I'm in favor of the minor modification.
I'm in favor of the minor modification.
Helen?
In favor of the minor modification.
I also am in favor. The next is the, is the extension. And, let's see, I guess, I'm not sure how to, we're from June 19th. Is that right?
June 18th.
June 18th. So we want to, let's see, if we were to go, would it be 100?
A six-month extension.
Right.
Till December 18th is probably the easiest way to do it.
There we go. So I would so move.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion of that? If not, let's go down the line again. Todd?
I approve.
We're approving the minor modification?
We're now approving the extension.
I approve the extension.
I'm in favor of the extension.
In favor of the extension to December 18th.
Okay. John Rogers, I also approve of the extension to December 18th.
And now another motion, if you would, to approve the modified plans as submitted with two, with, I would recommend two changes. One of them that was mentioned was the removal of the gates near unit two, and replacement of a, of one of those, the gates between units one and two, or units 11 and 13, or their actual addresses, with a privacy fence. And then the other one that I think you could capture the concern about the construction debris by asking that that also be added to the plan, and note saying that all the construction debris will be removed.
And you think both of those items are conservation, planning board, or both?
Both.
Okay. So I would move that we add to the extended order of conditions the two that were just mentioned in regards to the fence behind the one unit, two fences behind one of the units, as well as cleaning up, you know, remaining debris, material just not belonging on the site when the work is complete.
Second.
Any further discussions, questions, or comments? If not, Todd?
I approve the extension.
The modification. To the order.
Minor modification.
I approve the minor modification to the order of conditions.
I approve the modification of those two points to the order of conditions.
As do I.
All right, so now if the planning board would consider a motion, I think you have your motions written out. The first one would be to consider this a minor modification.
I move to determine the proposed changes are minor modifications, aren't requiring a formal amendment, because the proposed changes do not substantially change the project as originally conceived for a 12-unit senior residential development, but are intended to improve the operation and development of the homes and property.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and Dave, do you want to vote first?
I'm in favor, aye.
I'm in favor, aye. Deb?
I'm in favor, aye.
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 So we have five approve, and then do we have another motion?
Yes, I move to approve the modified plans as shown in the plans entitled Reynolds Farm, a senior residential development, Westwood, Mass., 13 sheets prepared by Glossa Engineering, dated May 19th, 2011, and last revised July 8th, 2019. Will we put those conditions in here for the fence?
Yes.
And with the following conditions, removal of the fences behind units one and two, to be replaced with privacy fence, and removal of construction debris.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, I'm sorry, Dave in favor?
Yes, I'm in favor, aye.
This is Brian, aye. Deb?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Bill?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, and then a motion to close your, oh, it's not an official public hearing, but to close your discussion on the matter.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion to close the discussion on the matter?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Alls in favor?
By roll call vote, sorry.
Roll call, Dave?
Dave says aye.
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 Thank you.
Can I make an unofficial remark?
Do we want to, we should close the Concom meeting as well. So may I make a motion that we close the decisions, Concom meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I think we heard it right down the line. Thank you, yes. Sure.
So again, I'm Janipal Desari at 31 Reynolds Farm Way, and I just want to take an opportunity to thank the conservation committee and the planning board for all their work. I mean, this has been such an arduous, long, incredible project that has consumed everybody's time. And I don't mean to get emotional, but particular thanks to Nora, to Mike Gillette, to Mike Terry. Just incredible work, incredible effort, and just thanks from, you know, on behalf of everybody.
All the best.
All is well that ends well, we hope, yeah.
I make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn? Second? Motion and a second, alls in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye, Dave.